Thank you. Welcome everyone to the Economic and Industry Development Committee number five. It is 1:51 and I declare the meeting open. So in attendance, we have Mayor Harding, councillor Madsen and councillor Fekner. We have an apology from councillor Conselman. So I will move a leave of absence for councillor Conselman and I have a seconda, councillor Fekner. And I will take that to the vote. So all those in favour, and it's unanimous, thank you very much. There being no declarations of interest or business outstanding. I'll move on to item number one, which is the confirmation of the minutes from our Economic and Industry Development Committee number four. And I'll move that. Can I get a seconda? Was there any discussions on the minutes from the last committee? No. So I will ask for the vote. All those in favour? Wonderful. And it's unanimous. So moving right along to item number two, which is an officer's report, the Discover Flavours of Ipswich Pilot Programme. So I will get an officer to come down and have a chat about that one.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Alastair Tavarez, Destination Development Manager. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Can you just run through the success of this programme?
Sure. So this is the first time in Australia a citywide restaurant programme's been developed. It's a pilot programme. I'm sure you would agree, you know, there's nothing that brings people together like food, you know, over a meal and the bonds that you create. It was challenging to bring this programme on in less than 40 days, in between two COVID lockdowns and Jobkeeper almost expiring. But to be frank, you know, like-minded individuals, both internally and externally, helped bring it together. External stakeholders that helped support the programme included Ipswich Hospital, Ambley Airbase, Tourism and Events Queensland, Brisbane Economic Development Agency, the Queensland Bus Industry Council, Probus Queensland, the Ipswich Chambers of Commerce, were just a few of the external stakeholders. Over the 18-day period, over a million dollars was generated in direct revenue. Twenty-nine thousand five hundred meals were served, which was a 34% increase in comparison to the operators' 2019 data. Now, to just give you perspective, if you've heard of Eat Local, in 2019, which has been running for roughly about 10 years, generated $2 million in economic impact. So in a nutshell, you know, over 75% of diners surveyed said they came out to try Flavours of Ipswich. The programme supported 385 hospitality staff, a 10% to 20% increase in labour hours generated. And if you stop and think about that, that's increased hours for apprentices, apprentice chefs, servers and staff in general. In addition, over 30 producers and retailers downstream benefited from the extra hospitality orders that got generated. One hospitality operator alone served 15,000 scoops of ice cream in that same time period. That's roughly about six months' worth of what he would do, they would do. The furthest travelling group was a bus group from Cairns, who were in Brisbane, and came out to Ipswich specifically for Flavours. Brookwater Golf went through roughly about 100 litres of wine just in the first week. Roughly 400-500 kilos of beef were served, just over, you know, the first two-week period. So these results have been already shared with the current operators that participated as part of Flavours. Future suggestions also included the introduction of potentially a new price point, signature experiences, live music and overnight accommodation offer, and even a nominal participation fee from operators to show their commitment. That would help increase both the quality and the quantity of the range of businesses that would be seen. So in a nutshell, you know, for every dollar we spent, we generated roughly $7.13 in incremental revenue. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. I've just got one question in relation to the survey results from the business owners for participation, and it was overall a big yes of 95% would participate again. Have we collected the feedback for the 5% that wouldn't participate?
So that 5% translated into one operator. And in speaking with the operator, what they read the question wrong, they actually thought if it happened again at the same time period next year, no, they wouldn't participate. But if it happened in March, as an example, which is one of the recommendations that the operator said, yes, they would participate.
Okay, wonderful.
Just about, you know, how you read it.
Yeah, the integrity of the data. Was there any other questions from council? No? Thank you very much.
No, okay. So just one last point, you know, if the budget exists, I'd suggest an extension based on the results. So that's about it.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will, Chair, if I could ask Ms Madsen some questions?
Madsen, yeah, sure. Ms Madsen, could you come down please?
Good afternoon. Cat Madsen, manager, Economic and Community Development.
Madsen through the chair. Noted this excess of Flavours of Ipswich, obviously it was great for the restaurant-cafe scene and we were looking, it could be expanded. Are you looking up, apart from tourism, are there other segments that something quite innovative could work on? Other segments of our economy? I'll put you on the spot now.
Yeah, I know. That's okay. That's what I do best sometimes. The short answer is yes. I think what Flavours of Ipswich does is it showcases what's available right here. So it becomes both a civic pride campaign.
Yes.
And a, I'm going to call it civic pride as well as a local collaboration. Like, it raises to the surface what everybody else is doing. You know, part of the food truck friendly initiative as well is also showcasing and providing opportunities for up-and-coming hospitality operators to operate easily in Ipswich. Where it can be translated to other industries is any customer-facing industry, whether that's art supply, performing arts, dress shops, bespoke jewellery, we could also showcase in similar ways. It's just how we create those kind of clusters, if you like. But I think what a programme like Flavours of Ipswich does is it actually creates an excuse to bring the businesses of Ipswich and the residents of Ipswich together to experience local.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Madsen. No further questions from any of the staff? So I will move that the report concerning the Discover Flavours of Ipswich Pilot Programme be received and contents noted. Can I get a seconda? Thank you, councillor Madsen. And any discussion? No. So I'll move that to, oh, sorry, ma'am?
Obviously it was hugely successful. It's great to see, and I touched on it, Ms Madsen said it wasn't just the restaurant, it was that pride in the Flavours of Ipswich. It was that pride across our entire city, from east to west, to north to south. And the only needy Ohi was from other businesses saying, how come they got that? Why isn't there something for us? So I think when we're looking at this, perhaps we can look at other industries as well. This has been a great thing. Maybe the group there will take ownership and maybe we can look at other sectors as well, I think is something for us to look at.
Yep, wonderful. So I'll move that to the vote now. All those in favour of receiving and noting, and that's unanimous? Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item number three now, which is the Food Truck Friendly Council Proposed Fees and Charges. And can I get an officer down for that one? Thank you, Mr Breeden.
Afternoon, Chair, councillors. Mayor Ralph Breeden, Economic Development, Local Business Coordinator.
So can you just touch on some of the items in this report, please?
Certainly. Look, as we all know, we've taken great pride in getting the Food Truck Friendly Council item ready. This is one of the final cabs off the rank to get through, which is obviously just locking in the fees. So what we're after in this particular report is for the next 12 months, we're just asking you guys to confirm the zero-fee option for the next 12 months so we can confirm and get some data about how food truck usage across the city will work, so we can really activate those places and spaces across the city. So it's with great pride that we've, you know, streamlined as many services as we can to really cut the effort back for officers and also for businesses to utilise these particular spaces. We've also engaged businesses at each and every step of this particular process, inviting them to nominate their preferred locations. And I'm happy to say that when we launched this initiative, there will be the locations that the local food truck operators wanted. And we've also put mechanisms in place that we can handle other ones coming on board and then grow this list over a period of time. And hopefully the next process in this will be using the software and the technology and the processes and apply that to other parts of council as well to make sure we can get some efficiency gains and make sure we're cutting back red tape wherever possible, in line with the Small Business Friendly Council Charter.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr Breeden. Did we have any further questions? Yep, councillor Madsen?
Could you just elaborate a bit more on some of the cost savings we've identified? It's in the report, but it's your work, so I'd prefer you to have the credit on that.
Thank you very much. No, look, there's a couple of different things, and there's some cost benefits that are yet to be determined as well, because one of the big things is officer time. So currently, when someone goes out and looks at a particular site, there can be up to three or four different departments looking at one site. So we've developed one programme, one particular bit of paperwork to go out. And I'm very pleased to say that later this week, when they go out and start marking some of these sites, council officers are going together in the same vehicle and looking at these sites. They're not doing it independently. They're doing it together as one team, which is fantastic to see. So the cost savings that you see here are only the tip of the iceberg. There will be a lot of other cost savings involved in this.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Breeden. So where are we at? So I will move the Proposed Fees and Charges Report, so both recommendations, A and B. Can I get a seconda? Councillor Madsen? And any discussion?
It's really wonderful to note, obviously councillor Madsen, this is your original proposal to the Food Truck Friendly Council, but the vigour of the fact that they've organised it. Sorry. Just like to note that councillor Madsen initiated this work before Ipswich City Council became a food truck friendly council, and the organisation has ripped hold of it and taken on with vigour and passion. And I know there's been some media, but also at the Local Government Managers Association Queensland awards recently, the Awards for Excellence, that the Food Truck Friendly Council initiative of this council was the winner for teamwork. Also, the Carrollley Library Pod was the winner for innovation. So Ipswich City Council is the only council that won more than one award, and this was one of them. So I think it's great to see that the organisation is getting the accolades it has, and thank you very much, councillor Madsen, for your idea in getting this going. And I look forward to seeing how this goes in attracting more people doing this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Madsen?
Just speaking in support of the zero-cost fee for the next 12 months, effectively. Removing barriers of entry is something I'm a favour of for new businesses. That's a way to get the market going. And I just think it's great when you hold it into balance with the administrative savings from the process improvement that the staff have identified. I'm really hopeful that we can do this in other areas at council where we're probably spending too much time assessing applications that are rather standard or indeed repeated applications each year or each month in some cases. So I think it's a real opportunity for us to take what we've learnt here and improve processes and just have it so that we're not doing, not me personally, the organisation isn't doing a lot of mundane administration that should have been improved as the part of the process of technology coming on board, but it didn't. So we'll be positive and look at it as an opportunity and go from there.
Yeah, I'm definitely excited about, like, what this project will branch out and do for other types of sectors in our organisation to save some time and some money and save some heartache for our small businesses, that's for sure. Any other discussion? No. So I'll put the items to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous. And now moving on to item number four, which is the Economic and Industry Development Quarterly Activity Report Update. I can see that our team has been pretty busy, so I will ask Ms Madsen to come down and just chat about this report.
Good afternoon again and again. Cat Madsen, manager of Economic and Community Development. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak to this report, because, yes, the Office of Economic Development has been busy in the last quarter. And as I commented last time on the activity report, sometimes the activities that spur and encourage economic development can be invisible. So it's always fantastic to showcase what we've been doing. The focus for the last quarter has been on three key areas: local business growth, the revitalisation of Ipswich Central, and attracting new businesses and investment into the city. Just some of the highlights within the report under those three pillars. So the small business funding, we did go ahead with round three of the Small Business Funding Programme. It opened on 1st of April, which was in direct response to the March three-day lockdown just in the lead-up to Easter, just when many of our local businesses, particularly our food, hospitality and retail businesses who were expecting the Easter rush, weren't going to get it because of the lockdown. So we changed the guidelines. We opened it up to $2,000 per business. And at time of writing this report, 79 small businesses had been granted a total of $145,842 in grants of $2,000 or less. And at time of writing, there was another 17 applications. Those applications have been processed quite literally in the last two weeks. So by the time all the funds and all of the applications have been processed, we anticipate approximately $270,000 will have been distributed to approximately 200 applicants through rounds one to three of small business funding. Ipswich City Council was the only council to deliver such funding to small businesses, and I'm ridiculously proud that we were able to do that and that this council continued to support the changes in response to the emerging changes. Of course, that's in line with our Small Business Friendly Council process. Mr Breeden's already spoken of the work that's been done to cut red tape with food trucks. We also launched within the Queensland Small Business Month a series of how-to-sell-to-council workshops, which were very well received. And based on that, we're continuing to work with the procurement team, not just on small businesses, but also on larger local businesses, on how to make it easier to sell to council and to ensure that we can increase our local buy percentages when it comes to procurement. Queensland Small Business Month was a huge success. Well over 1,000 people participated in activities across Ipswich during the month. The first Ipswich Small Business Expo run by the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce was a massive success, as was the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce pop-up expo at Orion Shopping Centre, where they got to, where they had a number of local businesses getting to showcase their wares in Orion Shopping Centre. As a result of that, in fact, Springfield Chamber of Commerce received another 20 members to the chamber. So again, just goes to show when you can get small businesses out into the mainstream, where people are walking past, we can certainly increase our visibility and make a really big difference. When it comes to the revitalisation of Ipswich Central, we know that this is a key economic driver because without a thriving CBD, it's hard to drive all of the other stimulus that drives civic pride, confidence and investment attraction. There is another report coming to the Ipswich Central Committee later on today, but for now, for the purposes of this report, we're currently working on two key pieces of work. One is a positioning framework, which will collectively articulate the vision, the shared vision, driven by the community and the traders of Ipswich Central, about what the future of Ipswich Central needs to look like. I kind of call it a spatial business plan. So if a traditional business plan is one that lets you know how a business is going to leverage its resources to make money, then a spatial business plan, which is the Ipswich Central Positioning Framework, is how do we leverage the resources, the hard resources and the social resources of Ipswich Central, again, to drive prosperity and a vibrant community? We're also working on two-place plans for top of town and for Ipswich Centre Core to bring together the traders and, again, define those unique precincts within the wider Ipswich Central. The Pilot Facade Programme has continued with four more businesses receiving upgrades to their facade. Those, information on each of those are outlined in the report, along with some images of the improvements. And then probably one of the highlights of the quarter was the launch of Operation Scale Up. Now, Operation Scale Up deliberately sounds like a defence event because this particular pilot programme was geared towards the defence industry, and it was designed to support local and South East Queensland small businesses to learn and to be mentored into how to sell into the defence supply chain. It's a pilot programme. Defence is really important to Ipswich for all of the reasons that we know that it's important. But defence actually is largely a manufacturing-led industry. And so what this pilot programme is proving to us is that we can bring together, similar actually to the conversation before about Flavours of Ipswich, when we can bring together industries to mentor, to guide and to shape, we can actually stimulate not only local business growth, but we actually become a far more appealing destination for other businesses to come to. So Operation Scale Up is currently ticking a number of boxes: local industry development in the defence and advanced manufacturing supply chains, investment attraction, recruiting other businesses from outside of Ipswich but from South East Queensland to perhaps expand into Ipswich, as well as local business growth. The exciting part of that, we're halfway through the programme, and both the industry primes, the industry partners and the small businesses who are participating are both reporting fantastic results already. Finally, just wanted to report to the highlight in the investment pipeline. Currently, the team are working on or nurturing an investment pipeline of approximately $2 billion worth of investment. That is straight numbers, no fancy maths, just a straight investment pipeline of $2 billion, the realisation of which would result in approximately 12,000 jobs. Now, within that pipeline, there are some long-term projects, 10-year completion horizons. So please don't ask me next quarter where those 12,000 jobs are, but we are working on some very exciting projects. And we've just received the first draft of the Industrial Land Analysis Report, which will inform a wider investment strategy for industrial land, as well as an economic development strategy.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ms Madsen. Was there any further questions? No? Thank you. So I will move both recommendation A and B. Can I get a seconda for that? Councillor Fekner, thank you. Now I'll open it up for discussion. And I would just like to say, I did speak to the Greater Springfield Chamber yesterday, and they were very, very happy that they'd increased their membership by 20, just by their pop-ups in the Small Business Month. So I think everyone kicked their feet up when June kicked over and May was done because there was so much activity. But it was really great for our region, especially given, you know, COVID and then the quick lockdown over the Easter break as well. So it really spurred some passion on for our small businesses. So, and to speak to the Operation Scale Up, when I attended, I made some great connections with businesses that were outside of our region but looking to expand within our city. So they wouldn't probably be classed as a small business, but we're not just all about small business. So they wouldn't probably be classed as a small business, but we're not just all about small business. We're here to drive and attract all businesses. And as much as our pipeline continues and is confidential, there is so much work being done in there with some real tangible results for our city, you know, both short term and long term. So it's a very, very, very happening space, which I'm very proud of. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yep, Ms?
So just with the Queensland Small Business Month, it was, I think, a real coup for Ipswich. We had the Queensland Minister for Small Business, Di Farmer, launch Queensland Small Business Month in Ipswich. She also announced the new grants that the state government are bringing forward. So I think that was wonderful. We had the Small Business Commissioner, Maria Chet, came out, I think, twice during Small Business Month as well. So I think it was just really great to have that emphasis here in Ipswich. And I guess in particular, Chair, you talk about, you know, not just small business, but obviously other businesses. I think as a council, we're really aware of the fact that our population's doubling in less than 15 years and people need jobs. So we're working very closely. I know it's up to council to create all the jobs, but we're certainly doing everything we can to facilitate growth and for new businesses to start here and to attract businesses here.
Yeah, definitely. And I think we're getting noticed, obviously, by the fact that the small business, sorry, Minister Di Farmer was out to actually open it in our region. And that was so heavily focused by a lot of government levels, so yeah, it's good work in this space. No further discussion, so I'll put that matter to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That includes our meeting for today. There's no notices of motion or matters arising. So I will close the meeting off at 2:16 and the next meeting will come through at 2:26. Thank you very much.